A good way to spend our fund balance is to use one-time payments. In other words, it's not a good plan to use it for operating expenses. You know that, I know that. But a one-time expense such as a boiler, for example, looking into that might be, I know you don't, I realize you don't say, okay, let's dedicate X amount from fund balance. I realize that you manipulate the numbers. So you do your appropriations, your revenue expenditures and have your fund balance so that it reflects debts being appropriated would factor in the boiler. Does that make sense, what I just said?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
I say keep building it up.
And I say to other towns, the rest of them in reserve. I tell other towns not to, because then they're so specific that you have to ask the public, can I spend the money? And we had such a hard time in the town of Victory. So that's why it's like if you set up the reserves and you took the time to do that and they're sitting there.
Right.
Earning hardly any interest.
Right.
But you want to take it from the fund balances. And I thought you missed on, you didn't understand the definition of the two reserves. So that's why.
Do very much, which goes back to where you, you said that there was a problem because the people didn't go along with, apparently the subject of permissive referendum. That's the difference between type.
Exactly.
And specific when it's set up. My assumption is that these were set up as a type, which means when we go to spend the money, then it means we're going to subject to public hearing.
Yeah, and I don't.
Right, and that would mean going back to.
Karen.
Yes.
Lee. Joan.
Present.
Lucky it works in here.
Hey, Charlie, you close? Okay, yeah, make sure you do that. Okay. You getting on Zoom or you come? Okay, we'll see. So, but now my pants are turning out here, right there.
Much longer at the time.
Yeah, make sure you do that, it goes a little, don't even see it, but my.
And, and.
Too much.
Normally. Normally, um, you have to put it in our home to whoever. I just, I don't encourage anybody to set up reserves because it's just such a pain.
Maybe we're gonna spend them out and get.
That's why I. Because then you don't have to deal with the public and we went through a bad time at the town of Victory where he had a huge dollar amount. Public came, they turned it down and now we just.
Was that the old, you know, years ago for the town barn complex?
The, the, um, yeah, that we wanted to do it in the town barn.
Yeah, we're gonna do something like that.
And they didn't want us to move the town barn and just, so we just dissolved and we don't have any reserves. And, and a lot of the towns don't have reserves because it's just.
Okay, in France.
Okay, so let me.
Fund balance into.
Um, that's what, she was saying that we were talking last night about using a reserve on some building upgrades and carpets and things like that. And then she says, let's use fund balance. And I'm saying, if that's your mark for that, why don't we get rid of the reserves and utilize the money? That's what we put it.
Right, because OSC is happy to see reserves. They're not happy to see big fund balances. So if they see reserve setup, and this is my take on it, and I could be really off base on it, but that's my take on it.
Yeah, town of Victory probably has nine hundred thousand dollars in fund balances.
Right.
Never got called out on it yet. And we pay every, we pay cash for everything, we put a salt barn in the cash.
What do you figure we have for fund balance?
For the.
Funds ABD.
ADB. I do it for nine towns, I don't know what the fund balance is here.
Well, based on the reports that you provide to me every month with the anticipated fund balance, it looks like our, the ABDADV would total over two million dollars in fund balances. And that's not.
I, like I said, I give you all those reports as like about forty.
Right, no, but this is for the rest of the group to understand.
I thought they, they probably do, don't know what fund balances is.
You, so you know how much we have in fund balance?
I can't tell you right now.
But they know that fund balances, they have, it's basically fund balance is the available cash you'd have to spend.
Right.
The reserve, you know, is that.
Town of Oswego, about ten years ago, their fund balance in the, I saw the OSC report, was a little over twenty thousand dollars, fund balance. It's like, what?
Well, it may be worse than that because I'd close out the books. S S one was negative thirteen thousand dollars in balance. And DA was ninety-five thousand negative fund balance.
Right.
And then I have to answer to a, you know, the state controller's office. And all I said is, you know what, they didn't ask the bookkeeper. I tried to explain.
Right, right. So where I'm going with this is that, um, we do have a healthy fund balance.
But what are you gonna do with the reserves, keep sitting on them?
Build them up, especially the highway equipment. Okay, let's, it depends, let's look at the highway equipment. And I understand that the snowplows are gonna run two seventy, two hundred seventy thousand. And Kurt and I were talking about this. I don't think we have it in writing, but the previous protocol has been to about every five years.
Every five years.
About get a new snowplow. And it's not in writing, to my knowledge. I encouraged Brian to put it in writing. He said, well, the town board could change it anyway. But regardless, it's important because it means we want to be minimizing putting that amount into the equipment reserve every year, like one-fifth of that amount. And that was the plan. I think we were doing fifty thousand a year about.
Then we just bought two thousand in the last two years or did anything out of reserves for.
But what's wrong with building a fund balance and paying cash for it? I mean, aren't we supposed to be looking out for the taxpayers?
Well, with the reserves, we're paying cash as well. We're not borrowing money for it.
Why, why would we put anything reserved if you want to keep using the fund balance?
Well, that goes back to what the training I've been through and my understanding is OSC just likes it a whole lot better. If you have.
They haven't said anything.
But it seems like they'd like it if, so if you say, we're gonna buy a new truck in five years. We're gonna put money in a reserve so that in five years we can buy that truck. That reserve has a meaning. If you just have money in a reserve, a building reserve, and they say, well, what's the building reserve for? Well, just so we don't have money in fund balance.
Which is.
Without having a purpose for that money, what's the sense of having a reserve?
What's the difference, can you break it down for me? Because maybe I'm a little like confused with the reserve and a fund balance. If there's an actual line and we know that we're spending money for a truck, what does it matter if we put it in the fund balance?
Exactly.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
The fund balance is gaining more interest than a reserve account is what you're saying.
Well.
Well, now with the reserves.
Talking about that, I'd like to change that. But the thing is, if you're gonna spend the money, I mean, they don't want you, what they don't want you to do is they don't want you to build your fund balance and raise taxes. That you're building your fund balance off the property, you know, I mean, off the taxpayers. That's what they don't want you to do, but it's, it's like if you build a salt shed or you build a new highway barn, they, they like that. And why would you want to use a ban to do that and pay all that extra interest? We're supposed to be, to me, and what I thought is the town council and everything is, we're supposed to be looking out for the taxpayers. We're, we're supposed to be investing our money to make money, so we're not raising taxes. So who cares if we spend the reserve of the fund balance? I mean, I don't, I don't get it.
Like you said something about permissive.
That was some, some of the reserves are set up that you have to, you know, you have to, you like what I'm spending this money on. There's two different types. And I gave a copy to Joan.
I can give you the country. I had already.
So there are, there are reserve counts to where you have that to publicly.
Yes, you should. I think both of them are, you have to put it in the paper what you're spending it on, but one is more strict than the other. And we ran into that at the town of Victory where we were ready to put in a new, um, building for us, you know. Oh, my God, they voted it down. You should see the dump we, we worked in, you know.
Oh, I know.
The highway garage, it's nice, you know, which is fine. So that's why we don't have reserves in Victory. We don't have reserves most of the time.
Now, if the town board decides to build a building, you build it out of that.
And that's what happened in Victory. They had a new reserve, they wanted to build a new, you know, town hall and, you know, they didn't like where we're gonna build it. They didn't like this, they didn't like that. So.
And that's the difference between the two reserves. If you're doing a specific reserve.
Let's move on.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're ready to move.
Wait, do we want to do A first?
We'll go back to A and start.
Go back to A for his, on page five.
Yeah, yeah. I also, if we could. I got a text message earlier from Andrew Joyce and also talked to him on the phone. And.
He may be here.
He said he'd be here late.
Yeah.
Um, he asked, like, bring us up, say his concerns. He said he does not feel comfortable getting a three percent raise because he's gonna be newly elected and approve himself yet. I'll read exactly his text message.
So change that back to the thirty.
Yeah, by one.
Well, why?
He said, I've been doing a lot of thinking about the budget discussion last night. I don't feel very received in the three percent increase everyone else is getting when I will be just coming into the job. What would you think about keeping me the same as you had in twenty twenty-three and giving one and a half percent more to Pat or something similar? I'm going to be about thirty minutes late to the meeting tonight. We wanted to talk to you about it. I have some meetings between ten and one time. And so I'll talk to him on the.
I don't think we were thinking about who's, who's in that position. We're just thinking about personnel gets a three percent.
And that's what I, I said that wasn't necessarily who it was.
It's just how the living is going.
Right, that's what I, you know, he said he's comfortable where, even it's where it's at. Ultimately, our things, I agree with him that, you know.
Oops, sorry, sorry.
He gave a raise, but I think, I don't think that's nearly all for what she's worth or what she does. I would, you know, I just betray what Andy said, and we can wait till he gets here if we want to discuss it more or.
No, I would agree with that. She is well worth every penny we paid her plus more.
Well, he was also saying that Andy did not want.
Yeah, he doesn't want a raise. He doesn't, he doesn't want us to do a three percent.
And I think that that would be bigger.
That's what I said before, so.
We've done it before. I mean, a lot of years, everybody else got a raise before, supervisor never got a raise.
We're very strong.
Very strong. I think last year.
We've gotten two.
Since I've been here, we've gotten one. That was last year, the three percent.
Well, what does everybody else feel about?
I'll go, it doesn't matter.
I, I'm, I'm fine either way.
I can go.
I don't want to insult Andy by taking away from him. I don't want to insult him by.
Well, I'm a booker, we just look a little unfair.
I just thought, three percent across the board for all. We weren't doing that, I mean.
I.
No matter who's in what position or somebody was leaving, I thought that's what we were just.
I mean.
I'm good with it, but there's been, you know, like we said, I've been here through the board in this like four years. We've only ever taken the two percent one time.
Well, that's.
When everybody else got, you know, highways, somebody else got theirs.
Well, I'm supervisor, that's when they first started that two percent raise. And that's the first year that the board got the greatest. And then just a few years ago, the stuff is going higher, we got another.
I don't.
You want to wait for Charlie to come back and talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did talk about it, I mean, you could talk about it when Andy's here, because.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if we want to, if he gets here and question him or.
I mean, I don't think that's fair that you, then like there have been raised throughout because there have been raises throughout minimum wage and everything else throughout the past years. Because obviously the cost of living has gone up.
At least two years or three years in a row, the board didn't get a raise. Didn't ask for one. I mean, it wasn't, I think it was offered, we just said, no, nobody wants it.
We'll sneak into the world, we'll be calling. For the certification of our town. Okay, it was up there.
Okay, do we want to start on page five at the bottom? Got to control, that's the same.
Where we have.
Page five at the bottom.
Traffic control. I don't see a need to raise that.
Very bottom.
That's what I'm saying. I don't see a need to raise it. Well, to leave this show or what to do?
Or not.
What's that?
Gotta read the whole thing. Yeah, so then you would go to Personnel Services, which you just did.
Page six.
So I upped it, um, because the guys are, they've, now they, so they're union, but they're, like I can tell they, they're agreeing to a three percent, so.
Think whatever was in the, why is it be whatever we.
There wasn't, well, they got a new contract come out the first of the year, but they're, it's kind of like, they're gonna have to negotiate with the county down board. But they talked and they said that, you know, then I talked with them modestly and, um, they said, well, no, it's not that.
With a union, you can't.
Pretty standard for Colton.
Right, but, but we signed it, they wanted a union, we signed a union contract for them, so we have to.
I understand, I, I understand that, so.
This, yeah, but this would get done. Just trying to think it out. We're gonna have to negotiate the contract.
Correct.
So we would figure it into the, what needs to be figured into the budget now.
Right, but, but he's saying is they're asking just for three.
So remember when we, when we did, when we signed the letter of intent and we accepted what the board was offering and they said that there's no contention on the pay.
Yeah.
So that would be.
Right, no, I'm just, yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
I, no, I, this, this is uncharted, water, water to be.
I'm just making sure we do it the right way.
Yeah, so.
Because I don't want to say, we'll give you three percent and then find out the contract said two percent or four percent or whatever.
So, this is tentative.
Contract was a one-year contract.
What I did is I went through and I took all the point one accounts and I found somebody three percent.
Okay.
I didn't know any other way of doing it. The only question about that is there's column. Okay, so what I did, you'll see it, well, I got the cheat sheets right now, they're right here. Um, on the.
Well, let's stick.
Okay.
Let's stick with yours, because yours is the only one that's A fine, theirs will be DA.
Yeah, okay, well, deputy pay, I went from two thousand two hundred sixty-six to twenty-three hundred bits.
Again, that's what the contract, well, again, it's an hourly.
Okay.
Is that three percent?
No, it's thirty, thirty, uh, four dollars.
Well, the deputy. I mean.
No, they're.
The deputy.
The deputy under the.
Well, I know.
Ninety-six cents an hour.
Yes, you pay more, okay.
How much is, is forty hours in a week?
Eighty hours with paycheck, um.
What is it?
Twenty-three, sixty-three, they get paid now?
No, the, we're talking the deputy pays.
No, 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 go ahead.
Deputy pay is two thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty-six.
Something at eighty hours in a paying period.
It comes to ninety-six cents of an hour, still.
I'm gonna figure a dollar for easy, figure it'll be.
Left, right there.
Yeah.
Times.
Yeah.
Twenty-six weeks is gonna be.
Is that the three percent?
Twenty-three, oh, dollar.
Well, right.
Yeah, so you're right. Yeah, that'll cover it.
Um, okay, the next line is the equipment. Now, in there this year, we had sixty thousand, that was dedicated towards the pickup that's on order. If it comes in, in this budget year, that can be put down five hundred bucks. The problem is, uh, the guy's on vacation right now, I gotta call him Monday to see if that's gonna come in. Now, when I ordered the truck, he said, oh, yeah, if you order it now, we'll have it by fall. And I called him in August and he says, oh, yeah, you should have it by fall.
By fall. How can we, Pat, can we do the same thing with that if it doesn't come until January? We just need that sixty thousand. Now, we're talking about prepaid, maybe prepaid something.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Yeah, well, we could.
This was budgeted in twenty-three.
Right, if we don't spend it, it'll fall into fund balance.
It'll go into fund balance.
Yeah.
Can we use that money to pay for it?
Yeah, then you modify the twenty twenty-four.
Okay, not a lot, a lot.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't budget it, they're so.
The only thing I've used, the only thing I've used out of that sixty thousand is I put a down payment on the B P O for the pickup. So there's still like fifty-five thousand in there.
So, in conference, I don't know, you don't do, okay, no, okay.
Um, contractual, I raised it a thousand just because we're in, you don't know what things are gonna cost unless you guys have a crystal ball that you're loaned to me. Like I say, if we don't use it, it'll go back into fund balance.
Right.
And so, just so you guys know, I really hate the whole theory, you know, I've watched it my whole life, that at the end of the year, people are like, I gotta spend this money or I'll never get it back. I hate that philosophy. If we don't need to spend it, we're gonna put it someplace where it'll do some good. But in return, if something is needed, I expect the board to, to back, you know, to realize the need and. But I don't, I, I hate the mentality, I've watched it, every December, the salesmen line up at the door.
Right.
Because they think that these guys want to spend their, ban the budgets right down to nothing because they won't get it next year.
Yeah, because they don't spend.
As that's, I will not work that way. Uh, I think it's, exactly. You might better save that money for when you need it.
And that's an argument for a reserve, by dedicating money to a reserve.
Well, as long as, as long as it can be used, to me, I guess it doesn't matter, because I, listen, I'm still trying to wrap my head around dollars. But as long as we can use it when we need it, you, you, you know, you know what I'm saying? I don't know the whole, we're going to some, another conference at the end of September, and I'm gonna sit in on a few different things. One of them's gonna be chip, wrapping my head around the state reimbursement. We need to start using that a lot smarter in this town.
Right.
And this truck that's sitting up there that's gonna cost us another hundred thousand, hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I almost think at this point we should pay for it out of chips because we don't have any roads, major projects. They're eligible for another two years. We can roll ships for ten years. And when these big projects come up, we're gonna have a ton of state money sitting there that we can pay for. In the meanwhile, the smaller projects, the Band-Aids, we pay for out of town money.
I just said that in Victor.
Yeah, it's the smartest way to do it.
So we're getting one two hundred and seventy thousand dollar truck with state money.
Cato swaps their payloads before the plastic is even off the seats. They have the best equipment out there and the best roads, and Victory's found suit.
Yeah.
It's the only way to do it. And this town needs to get on a program like that and stay on it. It'll save the town a ton of money and it will have good equipment and be able to keep good men.
I would look to the highway superintendent for guidance to make that happen. And it sounds like you're wrapping your brain around that.
Well, it's, it's, you know, first, it's a little bit of deer in the headlights kind of moment, but once you, it's not that, it's a pretty simple.
Sorry.
Plan, but that's what, so anyways, gotta get off track. So here's another question, Highway Garage.
Yeah.
The A fifty-one thirty-two point one, I cannot for the life of me figure out why we have, maybe somebody can explain to me, but why do we have a point one account for Highway Garage?
I think that was.
I can go look at history to see what got coded there.
Because.
I don't know, I can't remember.
The guys get paid the same whether they're fighting their margin. You, you know, they might be mowing the lawn for an hour, but then we're out ditching. So I just, I mean, I'm okay with it, I just don't know the concept behind it. You can leave it in there if you want.
Who's it?
Maybe it's when they plow a driveway or something at the highway. I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Things like that, I don't know.
So I.
Or more in the yard.
More in the yard or painting walls or.
Resurfacing the floor. Did it have to consult those dues and ask them? Yeah.
But does it need to be a separate thing or they're there anyways? You don't have to.
The other day, the guys, two guys spent the whole day cleaning the old highway. You know, do I, okay, right there, they're, they get paid the same whether they're fighting their margin. I guess is what I'm saying. So this is, I mean, if it's gotta be there, I'm, I'm okay with it, but it wasn't until the other day, I realized why we had two weekly brush accounts. Because one's because of the village.
I think that's why they did that.
Yes, it's, it's legal, you have to do that, so. But at first I'm going, this is stupid, why I have a DA account?
And I, I can give you some information on this Highway Garage because I had Robbie in town of Oswego, a lot of things get charged to the DA fund and he wanted to know I wasn't getting charged to the A fund. And I went to Auto Control and they sent me a guideline, so maybe I'll forward that to you. I'll watch to get charged.
All right.
There's a, today, nothing's better.
There, there will be, so I had, I had a chart that was set up idea on, you know, on, but so there's, there's gonna be two paychecks out of this year that come out of that account, right?
But I think they were trying to protect you too, the highway, you know, you, you send the most, spend the most money. So I, I do believe that point one is for like when you're, you're plowing, you're, you know.
Okay.
And, and I don't think anybody in particular, but I think they were doing your favorite, charging the A fund rather than the DA.
That's fine, it needs to be there, I'm just trying to wrap my head.
That's from reading the email I got from one of the.
And that's probably, well, if you figure the amount of time the guy spends there, maybe it's on the building or mowing.
Because, and the email is, so the DA should only expend money on. You know, office supplies and all that should fall under A.
Yeah, so that.
Do I read that forty-one or?
Well, I guess, let's, I did, so if, if we're gonna go up three percent, I mean, we need to bump that three percent. Five hundred, just came in, I swear we didn't come together.
Okay, so that would be.
Forty-two, forty-four.
What is it?
Forty-two, forty-three, sixty, so forty-two, forty.
Yeah, that's how I get, forty-two, forty-four.
Forty-four.
Okay, so, you know, I don't have a problem, I just want, trying to figure out.
Yeah.
I can research it though.
That's fine, I mean, don't.
But I'm thinking just from reading the email I got from an auditor on Robbie's questions that.
All right.
Then we, do we want to go back to the building, the town hall and do that?
That's why I was.
Maybe we do that too.
That's why they don't think that the DA should have to carry that burden here.
Right, that makes, so you're not taking high money to.
Robbie was getting things with everything by the old supervisor and I, I don't think that's right. So I started reading.
I'm glad you said that.
Page, uh, four, thirty.
Forty-one, twenty, right? I could go with three percent.
What's the number?
Uh.
Eight sixteen twenty point one. Three percent, it should be forty-one, twenty.
I'm, you're personal services for that, for the building, okay.
Did you plow this?
Plowing the lawn.
Okay, so the, the highway one was twenty-four, forty-four, and twenty-four, forty-four for the highway garage? And this forty-one, twenty.
Forty-one, twenty.
Buildings, okay, I just want to make sure I had it right.
Okay.
Okay, so back at the highway garage on page six.
Uh, the equipment, I've left at five hundred. Contractual, I put to thirty-two, just because everything's going up.
You're twenty.
One thousand and a half. So. Um.
Yeah, you don't know what fuel costs will be next.
Well, these on the rise, I, I know it solves one or five dollars a ton on the new contract. We don't have the new contract yet, but we do have the numbers. So typically, we this year weigh fourteen hundred pound on, you know. So that's.
They'll be given fewer in this fall.
Probably, yeah. And, and I don't know what stance gonna be because Heidenberg has been, we ran out. And we have to travel farther or have it trucked in, anyways.
I heard they're having trouble getting it out of.
Yeah, actually, a lot of towns are going to, uh, Dolmire.
Where?
Dolmire and Plor and, um. Dolmire and Plor and, um. It's, it's brown sand, but it's cheaper. And our, I was talking to a trucking firm today about Florida House of Trucking in and. And, and actually, Brian offered up their flow boys, said, hey, so we got it for fuel, if we have to go that far. So, in exchange for that, they're annoying.
Did, did I hear us do A fifty ten point one?
Fifty ten point one, the highway superintendent?
Yeah. He increased it to sixty.
Oh, yeah, did we do that?
Yes, but do you wanna explain why?
It's a little more than three percent.
It's more than.
Go back to three percent, it's fine, but with the three percent, guys are getting closer crawling time, my deputy's gonna make more than me. So, at the fifty five, that's where the thing, if you wanna go to three percent, that's fine, no.
I did, I just didn't hear it discussed, but I might have been.
So the guys now are union contract, they get, anytime they get called in outside your normal work hours, they get a fifty dollar call and pay, once a day. So if they get called in three times on the Saturday, it's once. But with that call in, so what, to, to calculate that, because you never know. I went to the county file contract, which allows us, in the contract, it allows for sixty percent of the time. They assume that we're gonna be on overtime. So I took that sixty percent times the number of times we were called, we were called in last year. And I put that as, because, I mean, who knows? You're just throwing a number, guys, to the wall, see if it's that, because you don't know until April, what this winter's gonna be like. So that's how I come up, I figured it's gonna be an extra about thirteen thousand point one accounts to, to cover that. But we'll get to that amount. So that's how I kinda calculated it out, but like I say, I'm fine with three percent.
Yeah, I just hadn't heard an explanation, but it sounds like some of you had, so. Page sixteen. It's nice to happen.
I know, that's so wonderful. If it was Tallahassee, I'd figure the page one, but if you gotta go to the D A, but it's easier to have it.
You, you weren't even moral, the whole damn stuff, I mean.
No, I did not. And the worst two bridges, the worst two bridges in this whole town are owned by the state of New York, and let them come and give me a red flag. Cause I'll march them right down there, cause those. There's nothing wrong with this little crap, uh, uh, he had. Here, Onionville Road, there's nothing wrong with that bridge, there's nothing wrong with that bridge.
That's what school he told me, so I just.
That there's nothing wrong with it? There is nothing wrong with it.
School, he said, there's nothing else, he's. He's nuts.
He had it in his mind, he wanted a bridge.
And when I McIntyre.
So I don't see, foresee any.
They just did that a couple of years ago, a few years ago, I should say, school craft road bridge.
Yeah. Isn't that the Lee Short slope from Royal Bridge? Kinda like, well, we can't call it from Oregon, name, name it after it's dead. Are we good with zero on that?
I'm good with zero, if, if something happens, I pass it, you know, we have fund downs.
Is why does it keep putting money in the reserve or?
Well, that's what I, I was, this, I don't know what you're saying, are you saying, um, we wanna spend fifty thousand dollars out of our reserve? Or you wanna move fifty thousand dollars into our reserve?
I would take this to mean that it was going in there.
Okay.
It looks like that's what we did last year.
Well, I haven't moved it yet. I mean, I can, I will before the end of the year, I just wanna make sure that's what this was intended for.
What would fall under? Contractual for bridges.
A few, a few years ago, that, that broke the bridge on, uh, Onionville, we did have to go down and do some patching on that, one of the.
Cause you're repairing it or?
That's what I'm, I'm assuming that if we had to go and repair a bridge, you know, guard rail on a bridge, it could go underneath that.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's my assumption, as you see, I haven't spent any money on it, but I think it should be there. If we have a guard rail, because for, they, they have to have those barber pole signs or which could go under signage, but. If for some reason I used money out of signage and didn't have. It's for dedicated for a bridge.
Exactly.
So, yeah. I don't see, we're gonna go to machinery now? I don't see where we're gonna need anything to, um, this year. Uh, now, equipment, I want to catch this, or I bumped it just a little bit, as you know, everything's.
Yeah, increase.
We haven't used, like, well, this number is actually, we've used a little more than that, but. We have, we bought filters for everything, I don't think it's on here, I know it's not on here.
No, cause this is from July.
Right, right, so we, we went through our filter inventory, and we, you know, we bought like twelve hundred dollars of filters, but.
The equipment line.
Is that?
Ninety nine thousand.
What, what number are you on?
Okay.
Five, one, three, zero, point two.
Expenditures, that was because of number, Dan wrote a check out of the wrong account.
Okay.
And so the, the down payment on the. Truck that's sitting in Harrisville, the ten one. Should've been, came out of a chips account, because it was paid for by chips.
He brought it out, he took it out of the wrong.
When I started looking at the paperwork, I was like, this is out of the wrong account. So that's why it's showing up, but it's balanced out because we got the reimbursement check.
So I tried to move it and fix it to make it whole again, because I didn't know about it until he said about where to, and then I said. Okay, if that's chip money, he took it out.
I'm, I'm looking at the chips file, and we've got the chips report, but it, it's not out of a chips account, and it's got to become, it's gotta come out of the chips account. So anyways, had dinner magic and straightened it out, it just shows up weird on the paper.
Yeah, thank you.
The repairs and parts still in it?
Um, we're good with that. You know, and here's.
Hopefully you don't spend that, but if you gotta do a mower in a truck.
Well, like I said, if we don't spend it, you can have it back. But what I'm saying is, you know what a mower costs.
Oh yeah, that's what I'm saying, if a mower, that's thirty, thirty five hundred.
Easy.
That's easy.
So. All right, um, then down to. Garson weeds. Okay, this is, uh, um, inside build, I bumped it a little bit. First bump, the point one account bump, with the three percent.
Yeah.
Um, I did bump it, uh, seven hundred dollars, cause as you know, probably know, the, all the ash trees in town are dying. So I, I expect next year we're gonna have a little bit more expenditure.
Roadside.
And roadside stuff, and most of which I think we can do ourselves, but we had, every once in a while, we gotta go on a bucket truck, and they're not cheap.
Fifty one, forty, point one, the personnel. It's thirty five and off, it's not thirty seven.
Well, still, we have two accounts, this is actually, yes, yeah, well, because we have, we're coming back around. Yeah, that's, that's much higher, yeah, yeah. Okay, so. Snow removal, so. So the, the point one account, I just, three percent to cover them. Um, the contractual.
Does it need to be more than three percent? Because when we do contract, they gotta raise.
So, okay, yeah, actually, actually, okay, let me back up, I gotta, so, I'm just like, this is like number sales for me. So, in the. In the, well, point one account, personal services, the three percent brings us to nine, uh, ninety four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah.
But, so with that call and pay, what I do is I split it between this account and. Um, services for other government, the D A fifty one, forty eight point one. I think personally, they should be increased each by six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Each one of them.
Each one of them should be increased to give us the comfort cushion for that call in time. You know, if it only snows during normal hours, we're good.
But if we have to call them in, that's gonna have to come out of that.
So that's why I'm saying, that's why, I didn't add that, I wanted to talk to the board about that, but. My calculations, and this is just a number to the.
And you're expanding, I've only snowed and called.
It only snows or doesn't, you only get called, like. When you're sitting down at dinner or.
But so, I took, like I said, I took sixty percent, because that's what the county, under the county file contract, they. The formula they use is, they figured sixty percent of the time, we're gonna be on overtime, which I don't think it, I think that's high, but I'm not gonna tell them that. But, so I took sixty percent of our calling time, down to the four guys, and this is the number I came up with. This is, I think. Maybe the high end.
You mind if I add more to those six thousand?
Six thousand, six hundred dollars to each of the, uh.
So that would put it at a hundred thousand ninety.
Okay, so, D A.
For D A.
Fifty one.
Fifty one, forty two.
Point one, is going to be how much?
I'd rather have it ninety nine, a hundred thousand ninety, but just cause it's. No, I'm fine, but it's just a hundred thousand's a scarier number than ninety nine thousand. Do I do a hundred thousand?
What is it?
One hundred thousand ninety.
Well, you could, if you want, just up the other one, that's. That's one seventy three thousand, yeah.
So you're comfortable with all that?
A hundred thousand ninety.
Unless we have an extremely hard, harsh one.
If you don't spend it to give it back, just.
Okay, so the contractual I raised, are we good with that one?
Yep.
Okay. The contractual I raised four grand, cause I know salt's gonna be at least seven thousand dollars more next year, so I split it between this one and the. Um.
Other services.
Services for other governments, which is another one of our, um, D A accounts that we use for snow removal.
Well, we've been, we've been paying for the salt on the A B N, so far.
No, D A.
Do we spend the money and then fall, is that why it's so low like it's?
We just bought it.
We've bought it since then, yeah, well, we started in August.
So it just says.
Yeah. Why you're not seeing it on here?
Right, yeah.
I think, uh, salt was fifty, forty eight dollars. We've been buying, saying like I told Pat, Heidelberg screwed up on some of our invoices, and I've been waiting three months to get this straightened out, but. The money will, I don't, I think we're gonna be under that, I think we're gonna have money left over.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I know we're gonna, but I just don't know the exact number, cause I gotta correct some invoices for you. Okay, so, um.
Seventeen.
Yep, services for other government. Um, so the point one account, so that's seventy three thousand, five, five six, that's that three percent. But that's the other account that I think we should add to six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, six thousand, six hundred.
We got eighty thousand one fifty six.
Eighty thousand one fifty.
Then the, alright, so the contractual on that was, uh, fifty six thousand. This is where I put the other part of the salt increase, to come to sixty thousand. Like I say, we don't have the con- the contract has been awarded, it's in legal department right now with the county, but I don't beg your benefit, we piggyback on them. But we do know the number, and it's ten dollars a ton cheaper than car bill going through American Oil, that's worth it, and that's trucked in.
And the rest.
Tell you a little story, so. With American Oil, we use whatever their trucking company is, something, something like, um, sat down at the table and stuff, and so we got talking, I'm like, probably. Those from downtown, he goes. Then you get quiet. Says, Dan stole it, my milk is gone.
So I, I'll tell you, maybe that's just why they ask me, because when I, I'd call, I'd call every Thursday. For a Monday delivery, so, and they wanted four trucks of salt, that way we could mix it, put it away, get a, a decent pace. Cause last year, Dan ordered seven, I told him to get all in one week.
Yeah.
Anyways, so the, the lady said. How many ton you want? I said, just fill four trucks and sign them. He kinda hesitated, maybe that's why.
Okay.
So anyways. All right, um.
Employee benefits are skipping, cause Pat's gonna work on that.
Yeah, as soon as I have the numbers for point ones, and I can do the social security, I can go online and get a retirement, but I don't know about the health.
Health insurance, we're gonna need to get the numbers.
This lady was calling them today and working on it, maybe, no, I don't answer them yet.
That's when I first dealt with that, what's his name?
Obviously Chris Harris.
Sean. He took forever the first time, he didn't get figures on that insurance, he felt. We can start looking at that.
If not, we'll keep the same insurance?
Right.
Can we, can we look at the other insurance that Excelsus offers? Is it possible? Can I send Excels? I just want permission to get a quote.
I don't see a problem getting a quote.
Okay, do you, are you a stand alone, or do you belong to the consortium that Menson, um, villagers join in and Manasima?
With who?
I can't think of her name, I'm working there, but we have Excelsus, but it's through like. Multiple towns and.
I have no idea.
I don't.
That might make more sense.
I know it's cheaper.
You're gonna get cheaper pricing.
But I, I, I never.
Is it only available to clerks or would be?
So we are a family. So you talked about it a while.
Yeah, and I didn't know, I never got wild insurance here, so I didn't really know what we were.
I believe you're the Brooks right, it's just we're standing alone.
I have no idea, I mean, that was done back.
This is just wild, was.
I think it was done back in two thousands. What year did you, were done as supervisor?
Which time? Two thousand, uh.
Was it twelve, nine?
Nine, okay.
Okay, supervisor.
Not really, because open.
If you can get a contact person, and I'll contact, I know it's not Brooks right.
She's coming out meeting with the village, cause I got her from.
And told me you were gonna the tents one.
Yeah, but if we can get, to see what's out there, just to see, cause. Yeah, why don't we, I'll do that tomorrow.
Cause they said it's cheaper than what they were paying.
Yeah, because this one, it, it's not very good coverage and it's.
The one we've got now, the one you.
The one we have now is not very good coverage.
I can forward you her, um, email and all that, she's working with, that's the village.
What do we do?
Cause now would be the.
In health insurance, we can pretty much. I mean, I think we add five percent to that, I don't think we're gonna pay any more than we were.
Thing is, if we pay more than we reduce the HSA, that's how it's always been, I wanna make sure we're right.
Right, but that's why we're thinking about, you know, is there something else out there, nobody really wants to.
And I think.
I'm all for shopping, but I don't.
Okay.
To have that responsibility, if you're.
She said she.
If you wanna shop, by all means, please.
Okay, I mean, I'll get, I'll get.
Yeah, I, I just, Diana, one of the trustees, because they went to shop, because they're gonna let another person come on, and.
Yeah, give me. Yeah, I know there was a little issue with going to the county, cuz then. We were paying the town, you probably remember.
Oh, I remember it well.
I remember it very well, we were paying a heft of lot more, and the county was getting the better insurance.
I remember that.
Also, we were paying.
They're using us for nothing.
Real bad, and then sent us a bill.
And it's like, nope. That was mismanaged.
Very much so, remember that.
I contacted them, I said, now I'm paying a premium, am I paying it for this coming month, or this month, oh, I don't know.
I know.
Before you switch to the Excellis?
Correct, we actually formed a committee, I think Scott Brown, couple of others were on it, did the homework, what you're talking about, and went with.
This was like.
Flexible spending plan.
Okay, so we'll, we'll kinda hold off on that for now. Uh, page eighteen.
Yep, no, twenty.
Well, do you wanna do eighteen at all? That's revenue, that's revenues.
Well, I didn't bring the revenues.
I know, and, and what do you put down?
So the file contract, oh, well, we can talk a little bit about revenue.
I was gonna say the twenty fifteen.
Eighteen is your contract.
Well, we can talk about the DA thousand one.
Yeah, normally doing it, see where it falls, but I gotta get reduced, or I can get into the tax cap.
Well, alright, I'll wait, I'll save this.
Well, I, I, I don't care, I didn't know if he had the contract with the county already.
Well, so that, so, the, the, we've already signed the initial contract with the county, and that initial. Base price was one fifty seven, three sixty seven ninety. But they're proposing that we take on our station road, um, which add, would add like two miles. Two point three miles to, again, we've looked it over, and we don't see a problem that has the highway department. But it would bump our base up, so one sixty nine, nine fifty seven. And thirty three cents, which is an increase in the file contract of twelve thousand five hundred eighty nine dollars and forty three cents. It also ups our per trip rate to, from, um. From thirteen hundred and fifty five dollars and three cents to fourteen hundred sixty four dollars and twenty seven cents. An increase of one oh nine twenty four. But this is something that you people need to agree upon. It's a add, it's an added of two point two three miles. It's straight road, it's one turnaround for us, the guy's gonna be driving it. Says that he doesn't think it's gonna be a problem, I've driven it, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, I told Brian, the only way we do it. Is that we get a snowball turnaround sign. And, yeah. I got greedy, I've got another one for one of our roles, we already. Sterling Station Road by Humphrey.
Yeah, okay.
If you're coming back, by the way.
Yeah.
So he agreed to put those signs up, if we agreed to take this on, so. As far, as far as I'm concerned, and, and the highway department, I don't think it's a problem, but the board has. So.
Authorize us to sign it.
And supposedly, there's an email playground out there for Scott and I to electronically sign it if it's approved.
I can get Charlie Reed's email, password, I can get in and find it.
Extreme line system. Well, six times six on the Kato. But anyways, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but it's a, it's a net game, um, we're back to. Basically where we were two years ago, I think within two or three thousand dollars of our base pay. But if we work more than that, obviously, we get paid more.
You're in the area. Yeah, do we have to wait for the regular meeting to have a resolution there, right?
Well, okay, whatever, that's, that's Monday.
I would rather have you do it.
I would like to read it before I say, yeah, that's where they.
Yeah, well, we're, we're chasing down email, I got a call today, they, they emailed the Kato supervisor six times with that, so.
So you said that the guy who does that route is okay with it? Is there any other guys that like do that in case this one is. And they're okay with it as well, I mean, I know that's like.
We're all cross, turning down everybody's routes.
Followed state or it's not too much different.
Yeah, right. Well, I was so, Conquest isn't following any county roads this year. So I was taking over some, Victor's taking over some, and they asked us to take over some because Conquest isn't even following the road that they're town barns.
I, I know, I'm already, I know, I work for.
Who used to follow that, Kurt?
The county did, the county came to.
The county's just not following, so they can.
They gotta, they gotta go to trouble, so they used to follow down to Nichols Road. So, we just take it right, go all the way, say, and turn around, come back.
So Conquest, that one's affecting that, they don't wanna follow that because.
Right. So, I mean, it's up in our base pay, we're, so we're gaining two miles. I mean, but.
They don't get no easier nap, cuz it's. You're there and it's straight.
It's, and it was recently paved, so, but I'll, I'll track down, I'll copy that for you, Jim. And if you guys can go down in Monday's meeting, but that would be an increase in revenues.
Okay, so which account are we on, DA twenty three hundred?
Best for that one, and then we. I thought we were doing one sixty nine nine fifty seven for twenty three hundred, is that the figure you just gave us? One sixty nine nine fifty seven for DA twenty three hundred for the county?
The new one will be the one sixty nine, yeah, that's the county contract.
And then the other was the village, right?
Okay, which one's the village?
Twenty three oh two.
Did you get the things? No, okay, so twenty three hun, DA twenty three hundred is.
One sixty nine nine fifty seven.
One fifty seven?
Nine fifty seven.
One sixty nine nine fifty seven, okay.
The other one's a village, right, isn't that, for now, I don't know.
Yeah.
Next, the DA twenty three oh two.
Did that say it's sixty four four seventy nine?
I think so.
I'd have to. I'd have to see what the increase for this year would be, cuz it goes, there's an increase every year, uh, it sounds about right.
I should look at the budget.
I didn't realize that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have that tonight.
We can leave it at the sixty four. Two percent every year?
I don't think it's forty three percent. Like I said, I didn't, I wasn't sure.
So if we keep it sixty four four seventy nine for now, we'll be all right. Sixty four four seventy nine. Okay.
That's really.
What would you recommend for that, like twelve thousand?
Probably. I mean, it's gonna be more if we go with what I suggested last night, but twelve thousand, say, I, I was below on the revenue.
Okay, so what was that again?
Twelve thousand.
Twenty four oh one, and you're gonna put that at what? So DA twelve, twenty four oh one is twelve thousand. Okay, so that's the entry, that's in my class, okay.
Yeah.
That's the only other revenue we needed for early, right?
So property.
Are you gonna keep the property taxes the same? Usually, we just put them the same until we figure out everything, I can't, I need to get into tax cap to even see what we can do, but. I usually leave taxes alone, try to come up to the other figures and then see what.
Right, so it looks like DA one zero zero one would be the same, because right now it's zero.
Everything's zero, yes.
We're gonna have another meeting.
Remember, yeah, I'm gonna. Figures in there.
Once she gets everything.
I asked Scott how we wanted it, and he was told, told me to populate it, the figures I would give, and then we'll just talk about the others at meetings. Normally, we throw something in there.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because then we can see the. The big picture, but that's okay, we're working in that direction. Wonder if I should.
What was the ninety four thousand, when we refunded prior to expenses?
That's that whole thing with the mess.
The truck.
Oh, that was the truck.
I had to reverse this.
Well, now that I, now that you say that.
It was telling me that happened, I was like. DB fund, and then I found it, and I went, oh, and put it in the DA fund, I gotta choose and put money.
Do we, um. On a DV?
Everybody good with that? Okay, uh, DG fifty one, ten point one, and there again, that's the three percent. Um, the contractual, I, I bumped it ten grand, I don't think we're gonna need even what we had last year. But the problem we got is our local quarry has been out of stone. All year. If we have to travel further, it's added cost. But. Just let me explain that I wanna get back to only chips ceiling with town money and paving with state money. Therefore, the next two years, I don't think we're gonna come anywhere near this figure. But if something happens, and like I said, if we don't use it, we can have it back.
I, I'd like to write that down, chips money for paving and town money for.
For chip ceiling. So typically on road, so when you pave a road, if you pull up and it's paved a road. You have to seal it that year, you seal it the following year, the following year, because chips has an eighteen month look back, you can pay for all that out of chips money. About five years down the road, you need to put a resurface on, which is way cheaper, I mean, we're talking a small percentage of paving a road.
Right.
Well, then in ten years, it's eligible for chips again, if you have to go back and do a page process. That's how some of these towns are.
Right, using the system.
Yes.
Benefit the town.
And I believe that this town should get on that program.
Looks like a good idea. How about the Blackston Road, that just came to me, what's special about the surface on Blackston?
That was a, uh, we tried with native stone.
Right.
I mean, it's holding up good, it just looks weird.
Okay. Not, not to most, but the highway people.
Base, that's all, it's all gravel, right, right, no. But it, it just, it looks weird because, um.
So it's not limestone.
No, it's native stone, it's, it's when, when wood's open, that's it. And it's holding up well, it just, it just looks, it looks strange, people aren't.
I know Paul mentioned it, we saw it was less expensive. That was main.
Actually, if you go to a swiggle, go down a county lot, uh, city line road.
Okay.
They did one side of limestone and the other side of native stone.
In my mind, I'm trying to think, like, see funny looking road somewhere, is that, you're right, cuz I'm like, what the hell they do?
I drive it all the time, about the fifth time I've gone. But anyways, so. So that's why.
That shows the contract.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if somebody's, is playing a joke or what, but, so anyways, that's why I increased that to two hundred thousand, because. The way the prices are going now, but I don't think we're gonna be near that. And you guys, if you wanna knock it back to one ninety, have at it, but I just know how everything's going on. I mean, asphalt prices are all over the board, I don't, I don't intend on doing any habits, they tax soon, so. Questions about that? Alright, you go down to chips, uh, this is kind of a guessing game. Last year, Dan hit a hundred and eighty five, uh, well, basically a hundred and eighty six thousand there, and that was just going on previous years of what they, what they allotted us.
Cuz we've got five hundred fifty two and twenty two, so.
Right, well, this year, we got two hundred and seventy one thousand. It was a big increase. We have, we have a project coming up, it's gonna be about twenty four thousand. You never know what you're gonna get, what you, what you don't use with chips, you can roll over. Um, and, and that's what I'm planning on doing, rolling it over until we have a big project, and then we'll do the whole, the big project with all state one.
Don't they give you a figure, cuz I know you can go online, I did, cuz I wanted to see what everybody was getting for chips.
Yeah, so, so, when I went online, when I first got in the office, and started learning about chips, and I, believe me, I don't know. Probably half of what there is out there, but, uh, I went to our residual accounts throughout the year, I was like, great. But anyways, I mean, but he bought the equipment, and it's not such a bad thing either.
Chips is, is, if I'm correct, chips, if you don't use it, you don't get, you lose that, and no. You can roll it over.
Chips you can roll over for up to ten years, and there's a lot of towns and villages that only spend chips money on the roads.
Okay.
And I've talked to Miranda Roth several times, and a lot of the little villages will save up their money. And then do one big project.
Okay.
So.
I don't know what I'm thinking of, there's something that if you don't use the money, I thought it was highway.
Well, there, there are some other programs that's rolled into chips, like, like pave up top holes and extreme winter recovery, they all fall under chips. Some of them you can use for equipment, some of them you can't, but chips is the big one.
Right, right, okay.
But yeah, that, so they, right now, there's a ten year, you can build it for ten years.
Right, and that stands for what capital, improve highway and.
Capital highway improvement. Program.
Program, yeah.
Okay, so.
You won't say more?
We're good there.
Why was it only forty seven hundred?
We, uh, we split it between, we split it between.
Between last year and this year, you split it between.
That was that, that robbery in the Danby, it was split between two counties.
Okay.
Who's Dan?
I don't know.
Sure, you try to time on new mowers?
New mowers?
Yeah, certainly time on.
It's depending on what you're getting.
Like everything else.
Um, not as much as pickups, but yeah, probably. Um, down, okay, this is the other weed brush account, the, the DB account, and the first, uh, so the DA account, I, you know, three percent. That's straightforward, the contractual, I, I threw a thousand on that, so like I said, we got a lot of ash trees dying. And I think we're gonna be alright with that.
Is there a reason we're all there?
Yeah, it's a little bug just getting in them.
Eating establishments. Why was it all, lost all the oak trees?
Well, we've, uh. Not over here. That was in the late seventies, early eighties.
We got a spider plant, it's controlling creeps and.
And then there's revenues, that's it. I'm gonna put something in DB two June ten, which is general services. Their government.
Is that the village? What is that? I mean, I don't see where we brought in it, I can look up and see where the seven thousand, but is that something we?
That's a specific number, I have some reason.
Page twenty two.
Well, I mean, in twenty twenty two, we, we got seven thousand nine ninety five, it's something we, with, with that type of number. I would think, village, were we, were we doing something for the village in twenty twenty two?
That would be the phone contract. I got you, that's the morning contract.
Oh, that's right, we're in DB.
I was gonna say. Town outside the village. That's why I was wondering if. That's why I was wondering if.
Nine thousand this year, roughly.
So you want that nine thousand?
Well, it's just a hair under nine thousand. But. Okay, I'll do that. I would say I should draw those numbers. Sorry.
Alright, so is that which uh, are you on D B twenty two ten?
Twenty-two ten from the past.
Is.
You didn't get them done?
Eighty-five hundred.
I thought it made to me at nine thousand. Okay, I heard two different numbers.
Well.
What was the figure for? The mowing contract?
It was just under nine thousand.
So we were gonna put eighty-five hundred.
That's what I got. It was right. No, I just.
Your own is right.
No, no, no.
How about sales tax? Eleven twenty. Eleven. You just pop in the same number?
The thing that she does.
No, I mean, it was. I thought you guys kind of. We have a conversation. I mean.
Okay.
Three eighteen, two seventy-four, we received two checks. I mean, you seem frustrated. Do you want me to pop something in? I don't know what you mean. I don't know. Right, okay. I'm not putting it on you. I'm saying that there should be, I think we should put that revenue in there. I would really like to see a total picture. Of appropriations and revenues. You will, and I did it the way I was. So by, I understand that. So I would suggest minimally, I mean, that's another conversation in terms of sales tax, but minimally put in what we budgeted for. Uh, the last couple of years. Just to have something in there. Which is.
We can.
I think we're just trying to get everybody's input rather than you run numbers and just throw anything in there. Right, so when we're, when would we be doing that input? We're doing it right now. Okay, we kind of skipped down, so I just wondered if they're gonna do eleven twenty. Right, that's not directed at you, Pam. That's okay. Doesn't even, no, we're like, right.
Right, but if I put a number in there and then we come in here and I get questioned, we argue about the number I put in, that's that's what I said.
And I think we skipped to twenty-two ten because Kurt was taking the. Right, you know, kind of lead on a lot of things. Things he wasn't gonna be good. I mean, it's not.
Right.
Right. Hurtin' anything.
Right.
I think we stay conservative. I mean, we could probably up it a little bit, but I think we always stay conservative. I think the sales tax. Are going down. They've gone down this year to the current last year. And the way the economy is going. I think. Yeah, I wouldn't want it going higher than. I'd say leave it at like two eighty-five.
Okay, according to my figures, just for the sake of having some. Background for the end of twenty twenty-two for sales tax. We budgeted three hundred eighty-four thousand, hundred seventy-one dollars. We actually received, according to the information that you gave me, six hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. That's an overage of two hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, so I'm just putting it out there so people have a frame of reference.
Then the year before, we had gone over by. Three hundred and something thousand or we upped it a little bit to stay conservative.
So in twenty twenty-one, our overage was two hundred four thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars. That was twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty, our overage was ninety-eight thousand. That's when you're going, huh, that might be a little tight. But um, in twenty twenty-two, as I said, the overage is two hundred eighty thousand.
The percentages that down the share from last year. If it goes over, it just goes in the.
A lot of times I, what I do is I go light on the revenues because I'm high on the expenditures. That way, you know. Your budget, so that way you're protected, you know, you're gonna go.
Your fund balance goes up.
That's how you more likely get a.
The number that if we do go conservative and say it's like two hundred thousand over, then it just goes.
It'll go into fund balance. I mean.
Like interest on it in the other class?
Yeah, the three eighteen is for two checks. We have two more coming.
But what we're doing is saying what, this is what we have to spend as well. So you wanna go low because you don't wanna shoot high.
I'm just letting them know there's two more checks. Hundred thousand is budgeted in the B fund, so hundred thousand is gonna go to the B. Any overage, I always was told to throw in the D B to take care of. Any equipment they needed. That's how I've done it since I've been here. What I was always told by superintendent or supervisor. So I think two eighty-five is low, but we don't know what it's gonna do. I mean, we could, it's a guessing game. I mean, sales tax. The bigger picture has to do with controller's office is gonna look at it. And say, if you're raising the taxpayers money and yet you're underestimating your sales tax, but you're collecting more. Um, property taxes, that's not okay.
But we wouldn't sum that.
We're not.
First of all. Saying we would. I'm just giving a bigger question from, right.
Okay, so Kurt, are you done? That's pretty much all your accounts.
I think so. Somebody else tell me whether or not. Did you get money in there for tools for that? Oh, uh, we're waiting on the check, but.
That'll be this. This year, that won't be next year.
Right, so. For what, what account should we put that in?
Text in the mail.
Yeah.
It should be. It should be in the amount. Are you getting them boxes too? We're getting a mobile tool cart so we can.
Good idea. So Jeff gonna suggest that.
I looked at one the other day. It's like six hundred dollars, but it's a really nice one and we can take it right to the truck.
That's where you want. We're not running back and forth.
Right, and today I just talked to the guys. One thing I wanna buy out of that money is uh, new high vis winter coats for the guys. To have in the truck. Right, so the expo show's coming up in uh, October. I was gonna take the guys. There's feathers there. They can pick the size they want and all that. Uh, you're gonna use some of that money.
That's good for morale.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I thought I was. If they get sized, I was gonna get the town's throwing out of their name. But they should have, if they're gonna get out of the truck in a storm, they gotta have high vis equipment.
No, you should absolutely get like their name.
Actually, it's thing one is. Thing, thing one and thing two. But anyways, so yes, we're gonna get a mobile, a mobile cart.
And being that you.
Yeah, it goes a long ways.
You just came up to something and go like, you know all the tools and you've heard them, what they.
Well, they have, they've got a wish list and we've been talking about it, so. Um, plasma covers on their list.
And you think you can click all those boxes? Do you think you can click all the boxes for the wish list?
Oh, yeah, I think I think we'll have uh, money left over. Is that like, we don't have any tools? We just need to upgrade some of them. The guys aren't getting greedy. They just want good tools. But when that comes, Pat, I wanna, I'll talk to you about. Now, we should put it in so I can access it. Well, right, yeah, yeah, no, I I we won't be able to, you know, we got, I think what we got from the equipment was good and. I I'd like to see some money left over. Alright, so if I'm done, oh, do you want this? That's uh, that's scratching about mine and Brian's. But um.
Okay, this is for, you got a copy of it?
I do, yeah. So. You guys can stretch that. Okay, yeah, we're gonna, if you don't tomorrow, I will, so.
I just heard the door open. I just wanna make sure nobody's lying or calls. I mean, they could come down.
Oh, your son?
Is this, who is it?
Why can't we use this Monday?
Well, you again, I just, but. Right, yes.
So this is all it's gonna change.
Right, but what the, you know, there's such a chance was this to you and the whole reassigning then goes to me and all that, so.
Except this.
So Brian.
All we're doing is changing the base area.
Right, so, so Brian, Brian sent this to me and and he like, this is his numbers here. And I scratched in the old and the new. Or the old trip and the old base. These are the other. So you can certainly use that. I just thought maybe it'd be something a little more official from the county, but currently not.
All we're gonna get from them goes that, when we got a sign.
Well, I was hoping to get this all in. In print instead of scratch at the bottom, but.
Please do.
Right, so I I can track that. Right. Okay. Any questions?
Good job, Kurt.
I'm just going to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not easy.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you.
What's the number we're thinking for? Eleven twenty.
D B eleven twenty?
Goes. Did you go? Three fifty?
Well, you put the spreadsheet together. What do you think? You you think the thing you love is what I'm asking. Right, um. I looked into, um, because we don't levy taxes. In B or D B. My belief, and I have documentation from O S C, that says we could actually put sales tax. In A or D A.
Right.
Is that your understanding?
Yes, we had that, I think that email.
Correct. Okay, so that kind of opens the door because sometimes people are just locked into this thinking. It can only be B. Or D B. And so I just to put it out to see, do we wanna consider putting it into A? If it goes into A, it can be transferred to D A. If it goes to D A, it can't be transferred to A and we can't go from. I'm doing this for the others, Pat. You know this stuff. I know this, right, I'm for the others that may not realize it. You can't go from A to B and D A to D B, et cetera, et cetera. But um.
Well, I thought I had. Not that I wanna get out of here, but why don't I go back and put in the numbers?
Okay, put in the numbers as is.
And what I'd like to do is.
Right, I worked, ran some numbers on S L one, S L two. Um, I have the numbers on S F one, two, three, with exception of workman's comp. I talked to Pam at the county. I'm not getting it to October. So we'll leave it alone, see where everything falls and then um. Cause S L one and S F, there's nothing to to sit here and review. And then we could um, I'll put in the figures for S W one and S W three for as far as the bands and and what I'm seeing. And then we sit because um, we need to talk about S D. It's it's concerning me.
Yes.
Um, I have some concerns on S seven three, how we're gonna get the money to cover the O and M and. We've had a lot of conversations on some other class and what we could do and.
Right.
I don't know if that's gonna work. So why don't I just run the numbers, put the numbers that I think based on. History or whatever and see how it falls. Fund balance is gonna be and I'll leave the taxes alone. You and I really need, I need you to. Spend some time during the day to get me into, they won't talk to me. And I don't know, so I can't get the task card. I mean. Maybe next week, yeah, or something.
Well, I got a note here to myself so we don't forget. Do we, when do we want to begin? But do we wanna get Jonathan out of here? Because he's got his.
Do we wanna plug in a number for that eleven twenty, just to say, put the same number? That's what I said. I'll put what it is, what we talked about and then run numbers.
But Lisa needs to write that down. What's the account number?
Eleven twenty.
And it's the top one?
Two eight four, two one seven one.
One seven one. And that is non-property. Well, I just figured. Page twelve.
Oh, love it. I love it. Remember how much time we would waste trying to say now which fund is it? We gotta find that. Right, with a page. Thank you for making me know.
I like the way it comes out too.
Yes. Okay.
I'm not asking for anything different. Just to be the same. I know there was some questions regarding the ten thousand dollars.
Well, we already increased it to twenty-one, two eighteen.
As far as, well, no, that's for the salary. I've come up to ten thousand dollars on B two three twenty-six zero point four.
Yes, we were, we didn't know about that.
Yeah, so that that part there was set aside due to the fact that Clovis is supposed to build a hotel. That project did not commence this year, so that money has not been touched. So if we can roll that over in the next year. Um, that is for review inspections of independent commercial. They're really putting in a hundred room hotel. We're gonna have to contract some of those items out. So that's a good budgetary item to set aside.
So if they're putting in the motel and we have to do some work, because we were talking to a consulting firm when we were on those kind of calls and we thought we were supposed to. Um, there are grants out there for planning. And she suggested, I didn't know that you thought that the town would spend ten thousand dollars.
No, no, but well, I need to hire uh, independent inspection agency as well.
For Clovis?
Yeah, a hundred room hotel, my office and myself. I don't feel comfortable doing a hundred room hotel. Right, you can charge that back, but I still need to.
Oh, I see. You're gonna charge it to.
Well, I would think that would be part of the process of.
Charge it back to, you're not completing the sentence.
Well, no, I I think Clovis should be responsible to cover that.
And isn't, I know that, I think in our L U R, doesn't it say with some of the applications that it's upon the um, applicant? I'm not remembering the cases, Jonathan, but if they need an engineer, da da da, then it's. Right, right.
Um, you know, wh- what our office does.
Right.
This town has never had a project to that size.
No, we haven't.
Um, ninety percent of what we do with our office, and I don't mean to disrespect Clovis or what they're doing. But it's decks and old bars with the occasional three to four housing starts a year.
Right.
Our housing starts are usually pretty small and a lot of our housing starts, um, you know, it's basic, a lot of our double line manufactured homes. Which follow the house housing and regulations as well.
So if Clovis should. Replace us, you know, give us some money back or we can charge them, but shouldn't we could put something on the revenue side?
I don't know.
We don't have something in L U R, we should like think about.
I'm not saying we don't. I would.
I don't know. I am not.
Yeah, I would defer to Andy. He's the one, you know what I'm talking about.
There's a, there's a commercial, commercial use.
Right.
I don't hold me on this. I I can look it up. Sign it to you, but there is a commercial use part of the L U R where you can. Charge it back to the person.
Very simple.
But they have to go through what have all the special use permanence.
As far as the clerk position goes, um, I'd like to leave it as a budgetary item. The. clerk position may continue, but most likely will not. I I don't wanna see anybody, I don't want, I don't want to stick this way. But I'd like to see that position naturally changed into a. Someone is more not necessarily a clerk, but also like a B S I eventually, which would be a building safety inspector. Um, and maybe come in like, you know, like once a month or twice, once or twice a month, there's something to come in. And they would assist with the fire inspection side and then with some duties made of the office. And we do double duty. I think that'd be more useful. Use of our finances and our time with anyone that they want to help, to be honest, so. And then the other thing I have that I'd like to bring up, and this has nothing to do with. I. Uh, but I'd like to report to the newly fee and the um. For fee structure. Um, it's been quite a while since we've been updated. Uh, in particular, the, uh, if you have a camper on your property, you're gonna own. And a seasonal property, you pay fifty dollars for a permanent fee here. Okay, that's fine for most straight costs, if you own a campground in town, get a hundred sites, you pay the same fifty dollars. There seems to be a, you know.
Is that fifty dollars for a year, six months?
Well, six months, I'm sorry, six months, but then if you own a campground.
Right, proportionately, you're saying it does.
It's it's your annual operating permit for a campground. Is is, you know, obviously fifty dollars regardless whether it's one site or a hundred sites.
Right.
You know. So that's, that you can definitely just look down, there's a few other fees in there, but the pole barn fees are a hundred fifty, I don't think you guys can change that, that's I think pretty fair. The other issue right now is something that had been brought to my attention about six months ago. And is that the L U R requires anybody that's placing a. Let's say you own land in the town, you don't have a residence on it. It requires a special use permit from the uh planning board. And a planning board review, uh it's an S P category in the L U R. And that, um whether it's a pole barn or even a shed, any storage structure at all, I cannot issue a permit for. Has to go to the planning board, that issue a special use permit, that's a two hundred dollar fee for that. So if you want to put a shed on your vacant land, store a few things because it's a primary use structure, you'd have to pay two hundred bucks a new cell. Um and even for some of these small barns or garages, you know, whether it's prefab or built on site. It's a two hundred dollar fee, I'd rather a hundred fifty dollar building fee for a pole barn, and I think that's a little, except a little high for that, for residential use. So I would encourage the board possibly considering there's reducing the fee. Or waiving the fee for residential, you know, structures and that nature as well.
I thought that that was. Because this came up a long time ago where. The corporate office, I thought that was reworded, so it's it's not, I mean, it's uh, I think that's what we.
We we actually just had a case, what, a month or two ago.
Oh. The other night we had two.
Well, yeah, we had one just a month or two.
Okay.
Uh the people owned the property down on West Bay Road, but they were technically in um. Uh. But one other part of their property, now they they live, the the property is a joint, the other part of their property was in. Pew County and then Sterling, so they had to pay that fee and put a barn up right next to their house.
It just seems a little, you know, they they.
And I mean, it's the same property, but they're they're just in two different.
I but I can't wrap my head around why you would have to add a special use permit.
And the L U R is.
I think it was looked down, so if I may give a brief history, Jay Moose. Um is our former CEO. Went by very literal and someone had a piece of vacant land, wanted to put a, I'll say a pole barn on it. Jay Moose said, oh, you can't, because it was listed under accessory uses. So if you're putting it there, it has to be an accessory to something, there's nothing primary. And it's not set up from the L U R to make a primary. So we ended up, the town of Sterling amended the L U R to add the category called miscellaneous. Where it has that for a structure and made it through the S U P plus a site plan review. Um so that's kind of the history, that's fairly recent.
But they still had to pay that permanent fee.
Right, but then remember, okay, I'll just toss this out. Once you're talking about public hearing and contacting the adjacent property owners, so Lisa Summers. Is paying, we're paying for the mailings, um which can get pricey. To help go towards uh covering that part of what's needed for the public hearing, I'm not saying I.
It was passed in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, it's a new one.
My my question is before. Is it necessary to do that? I mean, quite frankly, if they put up a barn is a is a primary use building. Instead of a secondary structure on a on a property.
If you're doing a subdivision, you still have to sign up those balances for public hearing, I mean, it's no difference.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
But it, you know, it's it's it can, it becomes a primary structure, uses storage. If they're going to take an occupancy for utility structure. If they're gonna use it for any other purpose, and somebody suddenly, well, they wanna make sure they're not using it as a business, they wanna make sure they're not using it as a dwell. Well, if they do that, now they're in violation of occupancy and they come up, you know, they're in violation of town code, so that itself is another enforcement issue.
Right.
But if if I don't see the, I don't see the purpose of it having to go to the planning board, I guess it's my, it's it's my. And I agree with Scott, you know, and I think it's either we can do something about the fee, so I understand the administrative cost.
Right.
But if maybe we can take, maybe we can, you know, remove that staff and change it from S P to N S C.
Right.
And if you wanna step establish from amateurs about, I'd say, this, you know, the code officer, you know, and it's this, you know, should evaluate based upon A, B, and C.
Right.
Well, that's fine as well, but I think there should be some kind of. You know, I I I'm kind of like, it's kind of like the water river district, I'm kind of handcuffed there in what I can do. For for even the shedding, you know, so I I think there's some some areas there. That could be addressed as far as do we get it too restrictive, you know, or should we go with that bump to allow some management? Um you know, and and I and I know Jay Moose enforced it, I missed it in my reading, I just found out when I was doing it wrong about six, seven months ago. So now I'm sending everybody to the planning board. And I know before me, between Jay Moose and myself, you know, it was even, it was like, it didn't exist anyways. So it really is a consistency, you know.
Right.
And I think just the purpose is amending, getting rid of it and going back to the fact that it becomes primary use structure. It's within the L U R rights is something that I think the board should consider. So.
So they're telling the board.
That's not even a budgetary, I'm just trying.
Right, right, you're, yes, so that would be something that the board could put on the agenda to take a look.
So you're being comfortable if somebody wants to put a storage shed on?
Yeah.
No, I'm saying on the. Oh, the L U R. Yeah.
Any any permit on that area technically has to go through the planning board.
And how many do we have?
Let's see, that was just supposed to protect this water, big water, or you're got restricted.
But they're all S P, you know, by all. Anyways, as far as the budgetary goes, that that explains the time, um everything else, I'm I'm good with, we're.
You may have moved over there, you may come, you may land on a hotel or that still.
I know that he didn't get some of the funding he was looking for, um I, he showed me. I had spoken to him about it since spring, when he gave me a little short tour of where it was gonna be, I was gonna lay it out. Um and since then, I think everything's been put on the, put on the back burner. I'm not even hundred percent sure he's going through with it, I don't know where he's going, but he also required a couple other parcels, he acquired other properties. Correct, so there's a quarter, quarter few acres over on that side. So.
Do you think that um. It would be better to have more hours committed with town of Sterling with your services, C E O services? Right now, it's two days a week.
It is, if I was going to do anything in extra time, I would have half a day on Wednesday when the town calls open. Um. And if I did a full day Wednesday, I would stick to my hours being in the morning for half a day on Wednesday. And then spend the afternoon either in the office or on the field. Can you get all your work done? So.
Do you do?
Do you think it's extra?
I haven't been coming on weekends. I agree, because I've been busy.
I was gonna say, are you doing work other than the hours that?
Well, yeah.
To get the job done.
I had appointments in meetings.
Right.
Throughout the summer.
Right, yeah.
Because our office is only open Tuesday and Thursday.
Right.
You know, and adding another day wouldn't, wouldn't really matter to us, because we're only from nine to four, or even nine, even on Wednesdays.
Right.
Um so I'm available by appointment, seven days, well, plus Sunday, but I come in on Saturday mornings to meet people.
Right.
Um I make appointments to people at their house on weekends.
Right.
And then I've had a couple of appointments in the hours after five here. And I think that's something that is recent in the last few news.
Do you think this is catch up, or do you think this is like actual, it just run out of mail?
It's getting busy, town is getting busy.
Town's getting busier, I I don't know where it was in the past, I don't know, numbers are up over last year.
Yeah.
Um I think my revenue was up over last year, or getting in line to be there. Um I. I don't really know what it was before I arrived, I do actually, because I got some of those numbers. Um I think we're back to the COVID numbers, but we're actually surpassing what three COVID numbers were. We have. Right now, we haven't had really, last year we had one housing start. This year we have three and I have a third one that's gonna begin here in the next month, sometime in October. Um. As far as. As as far as next year's going, I know it's projected, I think I've already have a few houses starts projected for next year. I think this, what I'm seeing is that the village, because the village is running out of building lots. I mean, already just built two, you know, putting another two houses out, another one west bay, that's actually known as west bay's ours. Um they're starting the northern tip of the town, town, towards the town, towards townhouse sweet home, that northern section. And that's some of the law, it's expanding out here, the village, everybody can get busy, people are buying lots and clearing land and. The other problem I'm having right now, the big problem in the town right now, and actually I talked to Lisa Summers about it, since I had you all here, and you're here. Um. Uh these Airbnb, I love campgrounds. Um I have one in the town that has eleven sites advertised. Um they've been sent violation notices and the county health department's been notified as well. Um I have another one that has um. Less than five sites, so it doesn't constitute a campground on New York State law, but it's still a violation of our L U R. And I every day, every week, over the summer, we kept finding them. On one complaint, like to one other, and find myself on the Airbnb website and finding another one. And it's kind of this area of the L U R, it's not addressed, so it's.
So we're, they're not allowed them?
No, they're not.
No, they're not. Openly dressed, hopefully, yes, to law recently. I remember saying that they're next to me because. They're encroaching, not only out here, encroaching in the cities to harbor. Who knows who?
So the county, um. The county actually, um. Had a complaint about one property, but he only had one campground to rent. And he gave the county a hard time, he went through the permitting process, we made for the R V, but he gave the county a hard time. So the county actually, um they have an occupancy tax. And technically, if you're running out of property, they can technically go after you for the occupancy tax, and so they did take that avenue on some issues as well. But there's even cabins, you have like a piece of land, five acres with two or three cabins on it, and I know there's a new more in town. On Airbnb that needs to be addressed, but those are all per the L U R, not allowable in the town's tone. So to me, that's the argument is no allow Airbnb should be collecting occupancy tax or something.
Correct, and I've already been looking into that, the skinny atlas, I'm following skinny atlas, it's the way they're doing it.
Yeah.
A short-term rental tags.
But this is, and this is the other reason why. I think moving away from the, I'm looking down the road to where, why I say, you know, that if you get away from the clerk position, you get somebody with B S I. Use fire inspection, because if we do regulate eventually Airbnb's or or these camp sites. Those all require an annual fire inspection as well, because they have exit signs, they have to fall under the occupancy, because these are transient occupancies. People are, it's not somebody that, it's not like you scout or whoever it is, but in their house going away for a weekend and decide to run it out for the weekend. These are folks that don't live in these places, they're using this full-time transient housing, so they fall under a different code.
We just got an application yesterday, the planning board, from somebody who lives in Auburn. That owns property that doesn't have Victor.
Crocker, Crocker, no, Crockett Martel.
They live in Auburn, but they wanna. Put a camp, a two-place campground, there's already like two double whites in there, but they wanna use it as rental campgrounds and. Like basically Airbnb.
That's gotta go back to the same thing as a debt, again, to lack of correct.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying, I just got the application, they were sort of, they were actually. They were, that's when Lisa somewhere phoned up, and they were, they were actually operating, and I I. There, yeah, they were one on one. I didn't know they were operating, I just saw the.
So it's, it's on the town board to say, okay, we would like to look at short-term Airbnbs. I know that is really big in New York State. Um and the town that here on just did it, so I can pass that on to you if I didn't do it. Right, yeah, I've been through a weapon on it, um as I think June will lot has, so. The planning board knows that Airbnb's have become problematic. It's be, it was a problem several years ago, um in the village of Fairhaven, I'm sure it still is. I had village, a couple of village residents say to me when I was on the town board, what are you gonna do about that? That rental next door to me where there's not enough parking, and this was a resident, a permanent resident at West Bay Road. Um parking was an issue, noise during the night, coming and going, transient population, I suspect trash might have been an issue. And I said, go to the village of Fairheavens meeting, because it's in the. But.
So so that's exactly why, what I suggested is an occupancy that.
Right.
Gonna have. A additional trash, you know, not, I mean, but they're just trash pickup, you know, that type of stuff.
Right.
So if somebody's gonna have something like that, that there should be.
That that brings a lot more.
If you're gonna even consider, I'm just saying.
A lot more of our tourists to town or our fireworks like we talked about, because they can come here and stay, where before. The closest they could stay was maybe a sweet home or surgery, so. We deter this, you know, and talk home against this.
It needs to be controlled.
No, I.
Um because New York State has requirements, uh you're supposed to have a carbon monoxide, if you have a rental, carbon monoxide.
We should have in your house too, but.
Right, should have, but I don't know.
You have to have fire extinguisher, exit signs, stair illumination, because it's transient housing, you're going somewhere, you don't know the layout, there's a place you need to find your way out and not be trapped.
Right.
And stairwell access.
Right, we are way off topic, but totally, the planning board gets it and understands it, this needs.
And I agree with Scott, it's something that I think we should embrace a little bit, but within the confines.
Right, right.
Yeah, you're saying, as Andy's saying, you wanna have it, but you just have.
Some municipalities, some municipalities have the restriction that the property owner has to be there. In other words, it can't be someone in California doing an Airbnb in town of Sterling at Moon Beach.
Manager that's in charge.
You've got somebody who lives in Auburn.
I'm just telling you what some municipalities do, so again, we're on.
That's why, so when we talk about, when we talk about the clerk position or whatever it is now. That's why eventually I'm looking down the road and saying, I'd like to keep that front, keep that position. And maybe reutilize it as possible, yeah, somebody that can do dual roads and help alleviate some more of the load that you have coming into the town. Because we are getting busier and quite honestly, it's only gonna continue.
I agree with you.
Need to talk about it, town board.
Right.
Right, but that's, I agree, that's my question, so I'm.
Are we, might find the fee schedule or?
Well, that's between the board.
That's the board, usually the board would.
You want that on the agenda for Monday?
The board has put it on like the planning board to look at the fee schedule, I think.
Well, I don't think it's really a planning board issue, I think it's just the matter of the town board saying, this is where it is and.
Okay.
That's usually done at the year end.
The organization. Correct, correct. You know, if we've got people that wanna put a storage shed, like he said.
Yeah, but I think that needs to be addressed as a special, not a special use permit, I, with Jonathan, where somebody should be able to come in. He should be able to. Somebody comes in, they've got half acre parcel, they wanna put up a. The residents. You have to have two acres to put a storage shed like that. That should be changed.
If there's anything extra, I'll throw it in your box.
That's what I was wondering if um. People will happy that, I've been writing, make sure we jive, I hate to do.
But I won't. How are you coming in tomorrow?
Thursday, because I'm going to the supervisor.
I can do this tomorrow, I I'll have it all typed up.
So I thought I might, we'll do the ten to two and.
Okay.
And everything else.
Okay.
For the. Meeting again on.
Do we want us kind of get an idea of another meeting? Since you're here now?
Um so I know, and you go, so I'll have the ten to two to give to uh. Um, so I know, and you go, so I'll have the ten of the two to give to, uh, Lisa so she can hand it out. Why don't we do it the twenty fifth?
The twenty, the. Bumpers up on the twenty, the. It's on the twenty, the right here. No, I, no, on my calendar, I'm thinking.
Right, but this. Are you thinking of that?
Yes, that's a, no, we can't do the twenty third. Well, right, that's at one o'clock of them.
Right.
Do you wanna do next week at all? I mean, I'd like to get this going because.
What was the nineteenth?
The day is a Tuesday.
It'll be right after the board meeting.
Right after the board meeting.
Well, the eighteen is the meeting.
Oh, I, okay.
I'm gone.
You're gone, that's why I thought.
That's right.
When are you back? How about that?
I'm back. Back to twenty.
You wanna do.
For the second, the following week, I'm.
Well, Mondays and Tuesdays are good for you.
Monday, Tuesday.
And I'm gone, I stay Thursday party.
Oh, next week?
No, the twenty fifth, the week of the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, you're gone?
How about the twenty, how about the second? We'll have, let's have it on a Tuesday.
Thursday, twenty one, why do we say that Thursday?
It's Thursday, you can't do Thursday the twenty first.
Mondays and Tuesdays.
I can. Oh, no, actually, I can, I can. But we have a longer district committee meeting at six.
Let's just say it.
So we could do it possibly after that, seven?
On the twenty first?
Correct.
Sure, it should be.
Could do six thirty or?
No.
So.
I had.
Give it a little time.
Do you think you're just. Yeah.
It's a, it's gonna be like.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this is the twenty first, so. Do you wanna do the thirty, seven, what do you wanna do?
The budget meeting?
Yeah.
And do six thirty?
Thinking, we're gonna be.
So who's gonna?
To keep to topics.
Yeah. Okay, six thirty.
Six thirty on the twenty first?
Yeah.
Uh, budget.
You said it's the state, it's the water? As a water district committee meeting, we have to fix the car.
You wanna try? Five thirty? Twenty first at five thirty.
Twenty first at five thirty now.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a box.
Six thirty for this meeting, correct?
Correct. And you don't need any of the curtains here? Correct? I didn't think so. Will we have the budget good enough with the, so we'll have a lot of information in it, basically? Yeah, I just. So I can give it to her, so we can print it off again. Okay. Anything else?
I have a question with the meeting.
I'll say.
Oh, don't we have to vote? We have to vote on these resolutions first. Ms. Karen.
I mean, get motion and then resolution all of them.
Karen, and seconded by?
Charlie.
Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, how about a special meeting, uh, September twenty first at six thirty for, to discuss the budget? Do you think we only need one mark? I think it's special districts, basically, right? Correct. Yeah. Charlie? Who seconded it? Lee? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, how about to adjourn? Lee, you got that one? Do you have to advertise or you just post?
Uh, I'll post it, I don't think I have time to.
Right, are you gonna zoom that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
At seven fifty seven, I'm sorry.
Just out my last discussion.
I'm sorry?
Last discussion about the budget, was on the last page, left of the D B.
Oh.
Back to the end of D B.
Yeah, this is the end of D B.
Yeah.
Don't be starting on twenty three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go back, I'll touch a couple further.
And some of this is kind of. Like the lighting district is fairly easy. Right. And the ambulance is fairly easy. Cause that's already.
Ambulance.
Or the fire.
Fire.
Just the one thing I might notice of this town. You know?
Yeah.
But that's, that's minor, and the biggest.
For what, for fire emergency? Dave? Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a quality.
Dave, or, uh.
Stand.
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 Ambulance.
Ambulance.
How do you say?
Crowsick.
Crowsick?
Okay, so leave me the motion, Charlie second, everyone in favor to.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I watched it.
So. Before you're. You're not.